As well, Commissioners, thank you. For each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation to under 10 minutes. They may reserve 2 minutes as a rebuttal. We ask that the public keep their comments to 2 minutes unless they have previously requested in writing for 5 minutes as a representative of a group or organization. Pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68.030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws, notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chansery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County vis a statutory writ of certiorari. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiorari to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. Okay, the adoption of October 19, 2022, minutes. Commissioners, do you have any questions or is there a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Adoption of the agenda. Ms. Ziegler, changes, please.
We've got quite a few, so I'll run through them and then I'll repeat all the item numbers. So number 8, 202217 Lindell, notification requirements not met. 10, which is 530 Church Street, notification requirements not met. 1717 Linden Avenue, number 13, case number 13, deferral requested. Number 15, which is, and 16 are both on Lawrence, 1012 and 1014 Lawrence, notification requirements not met. Number 19, the Bowling House District, the council member has requested a deferral to December 21st. 20, abatement program revision, we're requesting a deferral, I think I'll be able to bring that to you next month. Number 21, 746 Benton Avenue, notification requirements not met. 22, 708 Monroe Street, deferral requested. 24, 1411 North 14th, violation corrected. 25, 1806 Cedar Lane, deferral requested. 27, 1604 Forest, administrative permit was issued. 29, which is 2106 Grantland, the application has been withdrawn. 32 is 1324 Stratford, the application has been withdrawn. 33, 3821 Whitland, notification requirements not met. So that's number 8, 10, 13, 15, 16, 19, 20, 21, 22, 24, 25, 27, 29, 32, and 33.
Okay, that's a load. We'll have more for December. Okay, any questions and/or we accept the adoption of the agenda with the changes presented by Ms. Ziegler.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the revised agenda.
There's a motion?
Yes.
There's a second? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Let me make sure we have any council members present today. We see none. Again, we thank council members for all their work as well. All right.
As notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. We will read the consent agenda, or the cases out one by one. If you are in opposition to the project, please raise your hand when we call out the case you want heard. Items removed from the consent agenda will be heard at the end of the agenda. All right. So we have 1916 18th Avenue South, construction of an outbuilding. 1411 Benjamin Street, new construction of an addition. 1523 Forest Avenue, new construction of an addition. 1234 Sixth Avenue North, signage. 3703 Catherine Street, new construction of an outbuilding. 200 Fourth Avenue North, rehabilitation. And finally, 1719 Sweetbrier Avenue, new construction of an addition and outbuilding.
Okay, Melissa, I did not see anyone in the public to, any comments on that? Commissioners, any questions on the consent? Either that or a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move to approve our consent agenda items with associated conditions.
Thank you. Some motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, and the motion passes. The consent agenda has been approved. Our first is a designation. Who is presenting that?
2901 and 2910 Elm Hill Pike, known as the Buchanan Log House and the James Buchanan This is a request to apply historic landmark overlays to these two properties because they are separate, non-contiguous parcels, they'd be separate overlays, but they share a common history. The circa 19, sorry, 1810 Buchanan Log House is listed in the National Register of Historic Places, and I apologize, this is not a picture of the house. I thought I had one in the slideshow, but it must have gotten deleted. But I'm sure you're aware of the Buchanan Log House. It was listed on the National Register of Historic Places in 1984 and is therefore eligible for historic landmark overlay designation under Criteria 1 and 5 of the requirements for landmarks in the Metro Code of Laws. The main log house, which is not shown here, but this is the 1847 Addison Log House, which is also a historic building relating to the Buchanan family. Those two buildings and two contributing outbuildings, two outbuildings would also be considered contributing. There is a circa 1980 gazebo on the property that would be non-contributing. And across the street, about 500 feet to the west of the house, is the James Buchanan Cemetery. This is also eligible for historic landmark designation under Criteria 2 and 4 of Metro And staff suggest to the commission to recommend to council that the Buchanan Log House and the Buchanan, James Buchanan Cemetery be adopted as historic landmarks and that the existing guidelines for historic landmark overlays be used to guide future changes.
Thank you, Sean. It's a great report. Any questions, Commissioners? Okay. Open public hearing? Is there anyone here to speak? Yes, please come forward, give us your name and address.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is David Whitworth. I live at 1318 Alamo Avenue in Murfreesboro, Tennessee. On behalf of the Board of Directors of the Buchanan Log House, I am the Vice President of that board, the members of our chapter, and as a descendant of the Buchanan family, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to consider our property as a historic landmark. The Buchanan Log House is one of the oldest houses in Davidson County and one of the few early homes that's open to the public. The original structure was built in 1807 by James Buchanan. He settled here in the Nashville area around 1780, and he served in the War of 1812. The house that was shown by, is the Addison House, is one of the 16 children, and that was moved to the property in 1990. The house as it stands, well, has been modified over the years, and future Governor James Fraser lived in the house as a teenager in the late 19th century. The James Buchanan family can be tied to at least 15 other historical structures in the area, and as was noted, the house is listed on the National Register of Historic Landmarks. The Metro Nashville Airport Authority purchased the property in 1989, transferring it to the APTA, the Association of Preservation for Tennessee Antiquities, in 1992. Since that time, it has provided an opportunity for the public to learn more about everyday life in the early 1800s and early Nashville, and it's served as a community event center for Donaldson and the greater Nashville region. The Buchanan Log House chapter of the APTA is committed to preserving this historic site for funeral generations as a museum and as event space. We are grateful for the additional protections this designation would provide. In addition, we are working to restore the log house to its highest standard possible, and we look forward to working with the MHCC to ensure that all future changes to the property follow the practices, the best practices in the preservation field. We'd like to thank the staff of the Historical Commission for their work on our application, council members Kevin Rotten and Jeff Syracuse for sponsoring our application, and the commission members for considering our designation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We also thank the Board of Directors of the Buchanan Log House for presenting this as well. Anyone else in the public? Okay, closed public hearing. Thank you again for your presentation. Commissioners, any comments?
Well, this is one of my most favorite things to do as a member of the commission, and the Buchanan family is very well thought of throughout the community, and this just makes it even more so. So with that being said, I recommend a motion that we approve the historic landmark zoning overlay for 2901 and 2910 Elm Hill Pike.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Second.
There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I don't see any opposed, so that motion passes, and it will go to council for recommendation and should hopefully pass. So thank you again, appreciate it. Okay.
Thanks. Next up is a designation for the Layton Youngs Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. This will be, if it passes, the second mid-century district. It's fairly small, it's a wonderful little court, kind of south of Youngs Lane between it and the river. And it's particularly interesting because of some of the people that live there. William Layton, who owned all the property and sold it for this development, keeping the one down by the river for himself, was the first metro black police officer. There was actually seven hired at once, that started at once, but he was the first to be hired, so he was the first. And there are other important people, everyone's very familiar with the Swetts, they lived there for a time, the Dennises owned their own mortuary, and his wife was the mortician. So it really, through its architecture and through the people that were there, starts to show the rise of the black middle class in this area, in this area of Nashville. The residents were all involved in civic and volunteer endeavors, and the design guidelines for the existing mid-century are what we're proposing be approved, but with one change, and that is to allow for outbuildings that are less than 200 square feet and don't have a permanent foundation, that they just be allowed to have the type of materials you typically see of those prefab buildings, the T-111 siding and the metal windows usually are the vinyl windows, because they're so small, and there are already a good bit of, several of them there in the district anyway. So with that, staff recommends, or suggests that the commission recommend approval of the Layton Youngs Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay, finding the area to meet Criteria 1, 2, 3, of Section 17.36.120. And I don't believe the council member is here, but I did see at least one member of the neighborhood who's here.
Thank you, Robin. I know if any of you public have read through that recommendation online, but it's worthy to read, just such great history, which, you know, it's interesting as well that our commission is now looking at mid-century, you know? So this is sort of a new overlay for us as well, but it's just really great to see. So thank you. And if anyone is here to speak on this public hearing, please come forward.
Hello. I am Jamie Hancock. I live at the house, the Black and White House. That house belonged to my father, who lived right beside his father, who lived in the house in the bottom corner, which it was James Dennis. My grandmother was a mortician, and my father followed suit. We did own a funeral home on Weiss Creek Pike, which is down the street around the corner. This area is just very important to me, because that's of course where I grew up. Both of my, both my parents, my father and my grandfather have left us, but hence I live back there, just for the last five years too. So it's very important for me, and of all of us, I call it the court. It's just, I guess it's a younger version of what I call it, I was like, you know? But Layton Court means a lot to me, because that was my safe haven. I could, going down Youngs Lane, when as a child, you know, you could get so many different things come at you. So I went to Haynes Middle School and walked their fifth and sixth grade, so I saw, you know, there would be people riding by, you need a ride, those type of things, and I knew if I could just get to my street, I could go to that house on the top, that house, any of the houses, you know, and even act like it's mine, and if they saw me and I said something, they would know me and would take me in, you know? Even on Youngs Lane, a lot of them knew, of course, my grandparents and my father and aunts and uncles. So, and my uncle actually still does live in that house, in my grandfather's home too. So, family living right beside each other. Everybody I feel like on the street, other than the house that's behind our home, which is, was Mr. Layton's home, are, their parents, you know, their parents live there. So just please, we would love to keep the genuine outlook of how the homes look. We know the change will come, understand that, but just, because I've revamped my home, you know, but it's like, the outside of it, I definitely could have changed it, but something inside of me just said, no, you can't, because I was gonna change the elevation, I'm just gonna be open. I really was like, we just need to add, because I wanted more space, right? But I looked and I literally thought in my mind, because it was up to me, that I just don't want to change that. It's different, I don't want to be different from everyone else, because I don't want my neighbors, which are family to me, to look at me like, this little girl, you know? But I just hope that you guys can understand the feeling of how we want to keep our neighborhood the way that it looks, because we do care about how our yards are manicured, how we just, how things are, and also just, I don't know, it's just so many different things on why we want to preserve the neighborhood the way it is.
She also has the best mailbox, I just won't put that. Thank you.
Thank you. So your Dennis is your family name?
Yes. I was Jamie Dennis until I got married to Quincy Hancock.
Oh, you still keep that name?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much, yes. Does anyone else would like to speak, please? Yeah, please come forward.
My name is Vasily Johnson, formerly McFarlane. Of course, my house is not on the picture, but I used to live, well, once I got grown, married, I moved to Rutherford County. My parents both lived in the house, they're both deceased now. So the house was left to me and my sister, my sister lives in Georgia. So I said, no, we're not gonna sell the house, I'm moving back in it. And I did. Me and my husband moved back in it, we did do some renovation inside the house and everything. Of course, that meant something to my heart, to move back. And the neighborhood, I grew up there, I guess started at the age of four, all the way to my adult years and now. So it means a lot to me, it means a lot to the neighborhood. This court in which we live in was like, I guess you would say, the starting of African-American middle-class people, hard-working people, owning a brick home. We are basically, I would say, third generation that's living in the homes. I think everyone on that street, their parents has, is deceased now, and their children or grandchildren is living in the home. So I'm asking that you all please, please let us keep it that way, because it looks like Nashville is changing so fast, it's not gonna be any homes, it's all gonna be condos, townhouse. But we would like to just keep our home the way it is, we keep it up, you know? We have, some of us have grandkids that come and play, have an area to play in their own yard. We associate and love each other in the court, so I'm asking that you please keep it for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McFarlane. Anyone else? Okay? Please come forward, if anyone else too, so that we can keep our two-minute timeline. Appreciate your time.
Hello, my name is Chris Coke, and I own the property at 829 Youngs Lane, which is included in the proposed overlay. I'd like to start by saying that I'm in support of the overlay for Layton Court. I've owned property in the area for years, and I've driven down that court and seen it, it's quaint, it's beautiful, and, and you know, I've learned more about the history in Nashville for the homeowners and builders of the homes on that court. I'm not in support of including the homes on Youngs Lane as part of this overlay, mainly because there's a pretty stark difference between the court and Youngs Lane itself. Youngs Lane is a double-yellow line city collector avenue that is, over in the recent years and in the years to come, is developing, has plans to be extended as larger developments on the river continue to move forward. And so to have the seven or eight parcels on Youngs Lane included, I don't think is appropriate historically or based on the community development plan. Half of the seven or eight parcels on Youngs Lane are on an acre of land or more, one acre, 1.1, 1 and 1/4, and 2 and 1/4 acres. And so I think to say that that land can only ever house a single residential structure in this area as Youngs Lane continues to develop will end up looking, in my opinion, out of place as you have development up and down Youngs Lane, and then these seven houses right in the middle. I think Layton Court is more appropriate for an overlay because of, because it's on street, it doesn't pass through to anything else, it's a cul-de-sac street, its topography going downhill from Youngs Lane toward the river allows for additional development of this West Trinity Lane, Youngs Lane area, to develop around it without disturbing the homes on Layton Court themselves. So I'm opposed to Youngs Lane being included in the Layton Court overlay, but I support the Layton Court overlay.
Thank you, Mr. Coke. Anyone else? If not, I will close public hearing. Thank you again. It's a good presentation. All right. Commissioners, any questions? Any comments?
Yes, may I ask question to the staff? I think I read the reasoning why Youngs Lane was included in the report, but if staff can summarize that, that would be great.
Sure. Architecturally, it is very similar to what you see on Layton's Court, but he's right, the lots are very, very different. That could be, the changes to the boundaries could be something that the council lady looks at at a later time, but your role right now is just to make the recommendation, just to determine whether or not it qualifies, and then planning will look at it, and the council lady will also look at those boundaries.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I noticed that Youngs Lane was developed about 30 years before Layton Court in 20s.
The lots were, but the homes are of the same period as what you see on Layton Court, yeah, at least this section. I mean, there's, Youngs Lane has a lot of different types of development on it, but this one little section that includes those few is similar architecture of the same period.
Well, in my view, if Layton Court is eligible for conservation zoning, then Youngs Lane would be as well, if the homes are built the same time period.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. Anyone else?
An additional question then. The remaining property owners on Youngs Lane are not here today, but in support of the overlay?
I don't know. We haven't heard, we've only heard from the one gentleman, we haven't heard from the others. So that's why I say the council lady may at some point decide to take that section out or parts of it, as she, I assume, will start to hear from people. Sometimes, you know, it takes actually filing and starting this process before people realize it's a serious thing, and they start to come out and let the council member know their thoughts on it.
Okay.
Robin, is there any kind of mailing to the residents noticing?
Yes, yes.
So they have been informed?
Yes.
Okay. How many homes were there?
Altogether? I don't remember. Maybe around 14 or so?
15? Close. Okay.
I did pretty good.
Okay. Anyone else? Cashin?
I really appreciate what you had to say about neighborhood and community, and I think that's extremely meaningful. I think we all need a sense of that, and I really appreciate, that seemed very heartfelt. So.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, and I'll have to say, I'm jealous that you live in a place that your grandparents lived in, and you still live in and take care of it, and obviously love it very much. So I'm jealous that you get to live.
Madam Chair? Yeah, I do echo fellow Commissioners, I really appreciate the pride and sharing the neighborhood sentiment with us. So approving neighborhood conservation zoning overlay is another favorite thing for us to consider, and sharing, coming from the neighbors' sentiment, how it neighborhood means to you, and hearing those stories means a lot to us, and really appreciate it. So I think as far as the recommendation is concerned, I understand Young Lane may or may not be included moving forward, but I think as a Commissioner's point of view, because the construction age and design element is the same, so I am comfortable as of right now recommending both Young Lane and Layton Court. And so if council moves forwards and continue conversation with neighborhood, particularly Youngs Lane side, and determine if it's, you know, exclude would be appropriate, they can do that at that point. But I think, you know, include later was is much more difficult, so I'm comfortable recommending both as is, as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner, for the explanation. Anyone else? Make us another motion.
Yeah, I have to agree with Commissioner Johnson in what she said, and with, given the amount of growth that we are seeing in Nashville and the amount of growth that we are seeing in Nashville and in this part of North Nashville, like right down the street, there's a, there's a bunch of new, new development right along the, the riverfront. So this is a, a tool that, for neighborhood, for neighbors to use to have an input and control over, over what's happening in, in their neighborhoods. So yeah, I, I support at this point recommending the overlay.
Okay. Was that a motion? And there's a second. Is that correct?
Yes. With respect to the Lathan Young's Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay, I move for approval.
Okay, that's a motion?
Yes.
There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I do not see anyone oppose, so this is a recommendation to Metro Council for this overlay. So again, thank you very much, yes. And, and please do go to the hearing with council. And if anyone has any questions about the overlay, please go to your council member and have further discussion. Thank you again, appreciate it.
So the first and only violation we're discussing today is at 233 Cherokee Road. The violation is work done without preservation permit and differently than codes permit. So the work in question is the construction of front dormer and rear dormer, as well as addition of stucco on the home. The applicant requests retain all the changes and they are willing not to add additional stucco, but request to paint both the stucco and the brick white. So first element of this is the stucco. Unlike paint, it's reviewed in this district as it alters the appearance of the brick. It kind of makes it look more consistent, more smooth. It's slightly different than how paint is. Staff finds that adding stucco does not meet Section 3A3 guidelines for partial demolition as it alters a character-defining feature. Staff recommends that the stucco that has been installed be kept just to help prevent any damage to the masonry itself and that no stucco, additional stucco will be added to the home. Staff also recommends that untouched masonry not be painted and that stucco be painted to match the existing masonry. While paint is not typically regulated in this district, this is steps, step towards reversing a violation that cannot be reversed without hurting the masonry itself. And then, so, and the next issue is the rear dormer. The commission has approved rear dormers in the past. The only issue with this is the fact that it is not inset properly from the sidewalls. Staff recommends that be inset two feet on both sides, again, to meet the guidelines. With that, the dormer will meet Section 6E of the guidelines. Staff also recommends that the dormer be clad in either wood or cement fiber boards. We will also need additional information on the windows themselves. The final issue is this front dormer. Front dormers are typically not approved in this district or this area. According to the guidelines, front dormers should not be added to historic buildings where there is physical, where there is no physical evidence or pictorial evidence to show that the house previously had a dormer. The 2002 photograph, which is my upper right, shows no dormer. The lower photos from 1968, obviously we can't tell, so it's not being conclusive. So there's currently no evidence otherwise to show that dormer existed. And without that, staff finds that the dormer does not meet Section 6E3 of the guidelines. So with that, staff recommends that the violation is corrected within 60 days of the commission's decision with the following conditions. That no additional stucco will be added to the building. The existing stucco will be painted to match the color of the historic brick. The remaining exposed brick, not, it's not painted. The rear dormer is not clad in stucco, instead in a material that meets design guidelines. The front dormer is removed in 60 days of the commission's decision with replacement roofing shingles to match the existing shingles. And the applicant cuts into each side of the rear dormer, so the walls of the dormer are inset a minimum of two feet from the sidewalls of the historic house. With this, staff finds that the, that the stucco does not meet Section 3A3 of Part 1 of the Neighborhood Conservation Zoning District Guidelines Return the 20, 20 Century District for Partial Demolition, and that the front dormer does not meet Section 6E3 of the guidelines. Staff finds that with above conditions, the rear dormer can meet Section 6E of the guidelines for dormers. With that, do you have any questions? And so the homeowners are here, so.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly. Unfortunately, we are the homeowners of this house and I want to explain a little bit about how.
Please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Julie Alfrey, 233 Cherokee. And I want to explain a little bit about how we got here today, because I think that's always important. When I bought the house, certainly before I bought the house, I went through the neighborhood covenants to make sure we were going to be able to make the changes that we wanted to make. The house is a house that is a house package that people bought back in the 1930s. They came with both dormers and without dormers. So it's a house package with stucco and with brick components. As you go down Cherokee, you will see lots of dormers that have been added to the front of houses. And so certainly, whenever researching what the guidelines were for the neighborhood, a couple of things that I did, and you guys might want to pass this out, is I looked at the neighborhood guidelines and I asked about the neighborhood guidelines.
Give us just a second.
Sure.
Robin, is this new information?
It's, it's all your guidelines and their guidelines. So it's, it's well documented.
I just wanted to clarify that with staff.
Okay, certainly, I apologize.
Okay, thank you. Just for public record, a lot of times when an applicant gives new information that the staff hasn't seen, as commissioners, we would not really actually review that. So if this has been, you know, already in our report, then we do accept it. Just wanted to get that out there.
No, that's kind of where I was going to, I knew that it had been.
Thank you.
So, not at all. So anyway, in looking at the covenants for Cherokee, certainly dormers are permitted, certainly paint is permitted. As it relates to number four, which is the rear dormer, absolutely don't have any problem using the correct material that Kelly and them have asked for. The windows themselves in the back are temporary windows because it's cold. And so we added those, those are not the windows. We hired a young woman who is an Omar graduate to try and get the historical elements in place for this home prior to starting it, and she's great. And as for, so, kind of as we speak to the dormers. So the back dormer, the reason why, instead of coming in two feet, I think we're six inches off on one side, four inches off on the other side, is because of the loads. And our builder is behind me, who understands loads very well. So he took it out a little bit, he took it out a little bit further, just though the loads, so he secured the bearings for the home. And he can answer any questions as it relates to that. So he kind of did that just because that's what a builder does when they're engineering a house, to make sure the zoning is proper. As it relates to the front dormer, it was very clear before I bought the house, I wanted to put a front dormer in to add light to the upstairs. It was very customary in that period of time. That was not going to be a problem as far as the neighborhood covenants. I also read the design guidelines, which sort of state that if the neighborhood allows it, then that sort of supersedes what's going on. I'm not saying it's right, I'm saying that's my interpretation. Obviously, we wouldn't be here if that were 100% correct. Just trying to help you understand a little bit about where we come from and why we're here today, because I always think that's important. So that's kind of where we were there. As far as was there ever a dormer there? I don't know. I mean, the house package just came with both dormers and without dormers. As it relates to the paint, we were going to paint it white, which I think was going to be okay. The stucco was put on to reinforce the walls. There's hollow brick and a lot of that was crumbling in the interior walls, which we shared with Kelly and her team when they came out. They were wonderful to work with. So that's kind of where that came from. And then as far as painting the stucco red, I don't know if any of you all sort of drive up 65. There's a house on East Trinity Lane that's stucco, that's been painted red. Friend of ours owns the house. Her name is Norma Crowe and she wanted a Spanish hacienda kind of a look. And I think she very much got that with her red paint that's on the stucco. So those are the things that I would comment on. Sammy, John Reed, any comments that you guys might have? Dave, any comment? And then a letter builder, if that's okay with you?
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, David.
Well, that was asked to look at the house.
Please give your name, please give your name, name and address. I'm sorry, I interrupted you, say that one more time.
David Steele, I, you know, been in construction for 45 years. When they asked me to look at the house, from, when they bought from the nun from St. Cecilia, I went in there and I, the only thing that I could see that was keeping everything together was probably their faith in God and keeping, and way to keep them warm. Because the exterior walls of the house are not conventionally framed. They're actually made of adobe brick. And there are no studs, no sheathing, nothing in the walls. And then they put the brick over the outside. I've got plenty of pictures of that, if you want to look at that and see. I'd never seen one like that before and I, I don't know how, they just kind of stacked them in there and then put the brick on it and then the roof framing is on top of that. So when the brick itself has a smooth finish on it, it doesn't have any grooves in it and the brick, the border itself, you know, started deteriorating. It's one of the reasons they wanted to put the stucco on it, to kind of bind everything together and seal the outside of the house so you don't get any penetration. The only insulation we were able to put in is like an inch and a half spray foam on the inside of the house and that would be, to, to, to get there. Other than that, it's stuck up, brico blocks and they're clay brico blocks, they're not concrete brico blocks. Kind of like a flue bricks on the complete inside of the house. And then as far as the dormer in the back, we brought it all the way to the edges because I had to support the roof load without adding to the, the second-story joist and bringing it down to the outside edges of there. So everything they've done is just try to keep it period correct, you know, for that do with making the house heatable and structurally sound.
Dave, can you talk to them about removing the front dormer and, and what your thoughts are on that, because I think that's very important.
Well, the rafters on the building itself were two-by-four, which I guess the whole thing being built in the depression area, that they were trying to get a good-looking house, but they went as, abated as cheaply as possible. So that one big section right there was two-by-four rafters going across through there and had, you know, had a sag in it there. So when I started trying to pull the sag out of that, the sag was permanently in the rafters. And so when you start trying to pick it up, it starts pulling it loose on the ends. And, you know, with, they wanted the dormer and I thought it was a good recommendation as far as structurally being able to support that one section across through there and transfer the load to the front wall and back toward the door, the thing, instead of having the weight on the joist.
So if you take it down, what, what does that look like?
Well, I mean, you know, it's, it will be no small job taking the whole thing down. Especially it's got stucco with it now, the roof, you know, through that. It would definitely be a whole lot more job taking it down than it would be, you know, what was putting up.
Are you worried about the structure since it's all that in?
Well, it definitely have to be, start from scratch again with the engineering on everything with that to get it back to where it was at.
Okay. You might hang around for a minute, because we may have more questions. Okay? And we're going to open public hearing? Close public hearing? Okay, commissioners, questions? Beth, since you're our architect of the day?
They were different last month. We were in a different location last month and I'm new on the commission, so my apologies.
We forgive you.
Thank you. I'm assuming you submitted plans to Metro Codes when you received your building permit? These specific plans that called out this dormer and front and rear?
Yes.
You did?
Yes.
I guess I'm going to promote my profession a bit and I don't mean to be condescending whatsoever, but there's a big difference between an architect and an interior designer and an engineer. We all have our different specialties and I feel like, in this particular case, you would have been better served to hire an architect. I think they would have steered you in the correct direction. I'm sure your interior designer is great, but there are just, I mean, I'm not an engineer. I can tell you that I would hire an engineer to engineer the structure on this house. And I've worked on houses like this before and hired licensed professional engineers to do that. So I kind of know what my area of expertise is and I know that that is not particularly mine. However, I do know you can replace rafters. And basically, engineering-wise, you can pretty much do anything you want to if you're willing to sacrifice and spend money and make it happen. Sorry, did, did you all catch all that? Okay. So in this particular case, unfortunately, I feel the homeowner would have been better served by hiring a team of people to help you, because I feel like you had possibly been led in the wrong direction. That's my personal feelings on it. But I'd love to know your comments as well.
Can I show you the, the picture of the structure on the inside of the wall?
How do I do this?
This is the, the, what the brick inside of the wall.
Give us just a moment.
Okay.
Are you Mr. Alfrey?
No.
Give us just a moment.
We'll have to all pass it all around and everybody has to look at it, see if they have questions.
While they're looking at, I just noticed Mr. Alfrey was, is that, was the self-contractor?
Yes.
And do you have construction experience? Are you a contractor or?
Please come forward to the, to the mic.
Oh, so, so, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, Elizabeth, but you are actually the contractor.
Uh, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, the, so, uh, 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 so it was a, it, it was a owner's builder permits. Uh, uh, so, so, uh, 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 so, uh, 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 so, uh, uh, so, uh, so for, for, like, for, for, like, for, like, most things, most, most things, most things structural, structural wise, we hired self-con, uh, like, subcontractors, uh, 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 to, uh, to, uh, to, like, try, uh, try, uh, to try and ensure that things were, like, done, uh, done properly.
Could you give us your name and address as well?
John Alfrey and 233 Cherokee Road.
Thank you, appreciate that. So you are not the contractor. Mr. Steele is the contractor or was contractor consulting or who did the work?
Go ahead, David.
It was, it was where the homeowner pulls their own permit. And then I was helping him do the construction, but he was actually there on the job too.
He was?
Yeah, so I was more of a consultant slash work on the house itself.
Here's the question as well.
All right.
Under the recommendation of staff, is that the codes department issued a permit, and the number is in the project number, with the following scope, remodeling kitchen, bathroom, electrical, replacing upstairs HVAC unit. That was the permit. However, there's exterior work that was done. Did the applicant go and get another updated permit?
No, they, he actually, when he went to do that, they had him draw the house plan itself out and the house plan included all of those additional features. Now, as far as the outside, the carnage was falling off, so we just updated the carnage on the outside of the house. And then, like I said, the, the stucco on the outside, the brick, they, they started, when they first started with it, there were several cracks in the brick and the structure and they came in and, and re, put order back in those.
But that wasn't on the original permit, so, which means this work was done without a permit?
Well, I mean, it's just, when you, when you do minor stuff like that, as far as, like fixing the cracks in the brick, I'm not, you know, I'm not sure that that requires a permit.
Well, but adding a dormer is not fixing a crack in a brick.
Well, adding the dormer is included on the floor plan that he has submitted with Metro Codes.
And so that was approved and you, Robin, did you approve that?
No, that did not receive a permit.
That did not receive a permit, so, right. That did not receive a permit according?
From Metro or?
From Metro.
From Metro?
Well, for, Robin, help me out here. But the way I understand it, if I go in and I'm in a historic overlay district and you all help me, and I give a permit to codes, they're going to flag it and tell me I have to go see Metro Historical Zoning. Is that correct?
It depends on the type of permit. So, so you're correct. If the full scope is given and...
And you list out, like, dorm- And you list out like dormer and stuff?
Right. Then we know that a preservation permit is also needed.
Okay.
And so they won't be able to get their building permit until they get their preservation permit.
Okay.
But in this case, the scope didn't include that information. So we signed off on it not realizing the full scope.
Two dormers built.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ma'am, if you're going to speak, we're going to need to get you to the mic and, and the commission will need to accept that they.
Okay, okay. My first time ever.
Sure, sure.
I'm not doing a great job. But we started two years ago when we bought the house during COVID. So submitting.
I'm going to give you 15 seconds so you can explain.
Okay. Submitting things back and forth, back and forth. And so then by the time we got to it, then we submitted and then we gave them some more information. So it's kind of the way it started and then we kept piecemealing the information.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just to kind of add that, if that helps at all.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
The way I see it is from the codes department, the applicant received interior only remodeling. As far as our record and codes department and Metro Historic Zoning Department is concerned, we have not received exterior remodel. And at this time, I think applicant does not give us proof there was originally front dormer. And if applicant have proof there was originally front dormer, I am open to consider. However, I think as far as I know, applicant failed to convince us, at least convince me, there was historically dormer on that house. So that leaves us, the construction done thus far is done without permit. So therefore it's violation. Because historic zoning, when we, you know, uh, accept addition, remodeling, restore, that is done based on the guideline. If historic house had originally dormer, yes, we can allow a front alteration. But this, there's no historical front dormer. So that stands violation to me. So for that, um, I think staff report is right on. But as far as 60 days to restore, because of the timing, we are going into Thanksgiving and Christmas and holiday season. I am willing to go, uh, 90 days and with understanding of additional time, if they need additional time, they may come to zoning administrator and ask, consider additional, uh, time. But however, I propose 60 days to, uh, restore a violation. So that's what, how I feel of this project.
Commissioner, you were saying 60 to 90 days?
That is correct.
Correct. Okay. Commissioners, any other comment?
Do we want to include, um, making the back dormer conform within that timeframe as well?
Yes. I agree with staff recommendation. So within timeframe, uh, instead of 60 days, I propose 90 days to, uh, make, uh, correct other violation within that timeframe.
I'm sure you had some comment?
Uh, yeah, I agree with the, with the basic. This is pretty cut and dry. We've seen cases like this before, work done that's not been permitted. Uh, we haven't, uh, don't usually look favorably on that source, this sort of situation. Uh, it's, it's a mess, but, um, I agree with the staff analysis and recommendation. I'm fine with extending to 90 days for correction.
Okay. Any other comment? Is there a motion?
I move that we abide by staff's guidelines for 233 Cherokee Road with the one exception of allowing the homeowner 60 days, uh, 90 days instead of 60 days.
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I do not see any opposed, so that motion carries. Thank you. Please work with the staff. Appreciate it. Appreciate your time.
I have one question.
The, the commission has already made their decision. If you have any comments?
I was just wondering what our stop process deal is.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have 1807 Lakehurst. Uh, this may look familiar to the commission. We've got a little bit of history with this one. Um, the commission reviewed and disapproved a proposed two-story addition to this house in February of this year. A staff level permit was issued the next month for a one-story addition, um, but that addition was not constructed. The house has since been sold. Um, and this is an application for a different one-story addition. Um, this one extends into the rear setback. The applicant's proposing a few changes to window openings that staff finds to be appropriate. Um, first, the windows here in the former garage, uh, at that yellow arrow will be reduced in size and then a window will be removed on the right side elevation where that blue arrow is. Staff found, found those two changes to be appropriate. Um, the addition is appropriate in terms of height, width, massing, materials, inset and connection. The main issue here is the rear setback. Um, that red line there is the rear property line and the yellow line is the 20-foot rear setback. You can see that the applicant's proposing to construct a large portion of the addition within that 20-foot rear setback area. Um, the new construction's going to come within about three feet of the rear property line there at the top corner. So the commission has sometimes reduced rear setbacks when a lot is constrained. So for instance, if the lot's unusually shallow or if there's an easement or in a regular lot shape, or if the historic house sits very close to the rear of the lot. But this, this lot doesn't have any of those conditions. In this instance, it's the design of the addition that's pushing it back into the setback. The L-shaped footprint is creating a 750 square foot courtyard there in the middle within the buildable area of the lot. Um, and approximately seven, or 615 square feet of footprint is located in that rear setback. So that footprint massing could be adjusted to all fit within the setback. Um, next door at 1805 Lake Hur, Lakehurst, the historic house itself was constructed well behind the standard front setback for this block, kind of right along the rear property line. Given this historic condition, a modest addition was approved by the commission that also sits along the rear property line here. This was a unique circumstance where the only other alternative was to build forward of the historic house. Staff doesn't find that this case is similar enough to serve as precedent for the neighboring historic property, um, which has ample space behind this historic house to also build in that rear setback. So in conclusion, because adjusting the footprint to meet the setback would require a major redesign, staff is recommending disapproval of this proposed addition, finding that it does not meet Section 6C3 for setbacks of Part 1 of the design guidelines. I know the applicant's here and wishes to speak, but do you have questions for me first?
Thanks, Jenny.
Hi, my name is Fuller Hannan. I'm here, um, on behalf of Pfeffer Turroad Architecture. We were the applicant, representing the applicant for this project. Um, Jenny presented it beautifully. Um, we're, we're here to ask for an encroachment into the rear setback. Um, as you can see, there is significant, um, you know, character to this home that we hope to preserve, um, given that it is in the overlay for the Little Hollywood neighborhood. Um, but as you can also see in the rear, there is significant, um, disrepair to the rear of the, of the structure due to the runoff from the significant grade change. Um, it's roughly about 10 feet difference between the unimproved alleyway, um, at the top of that hill, um, down to the grade level of the current home. Um, these are, are two neighboring properties. Um, again, one, uh, that is in the similar Spanish mission style of Little Hollywood. Um, you know, really these character defining properties that make this a true neighborhood. Um, the, the project that Jenny mentioned that was recently constructed or renovated, um, is directly next door and that is the one that sits predominantly in that rear setback. Again, along that unimproved alleyway in the rear. Um, we find that, you know, again, we have so much respect for the work that the historic, um, commission does. So it feels slightly strange being up here to say we disagree. Um, but we do believe that this home does set a precedent for, um, intruding upon that rear setback. Again, this is one of those original homes that when, when we talk about, you know, what the different precedents for that, um, particular, um, code in, for that particular, uh, section of the code, this would be one of those properties that would, um, contribute to that language. Um, and then just to show, this is the, uh, addition that was approved, um, in 2021 by this commission. Um, as you can see, it also, um, sat in the rear setback as well. Um, it was a detached dado structure. So this again shows, um, that detached, um, structure that was approved as well as the structure that was approved next door. Uh, again, we are asking for allowing us to move into the rear setback. Um, we understand that that is a significant amount of structure that's going into the rear setback. Our goal is to utilize that hillside to really act as more of a retaining wall by the building rather than having to construct a huge retaining wall to, um, protect the building. Um, we think that this would allow for there to be less runoff, less, um, you know, environmental impact to the rest of the properties surrounding it. Um, we also, you know, would like to be able to provide this client with a significant outdoor space to enjoy the property. And the way we see being able to do that is by carving out this courtyard, this interior courtyard, again, utilizing the home really as part of that retaining wall. There is an additional part of the retaining wall. We do have a, um, we do have a utilities easement that runs alongside the property as well, um, which we are staying out of. So again, I understand what we're asking for is not, again, is not, um, in the rules, but we're asking for an exception based on good design. And I hope that that's what, um, you can see in this application. Um, we're maintaining, this is the front door. Um, we are maintaining the existing footprint. This is that studio space that Jenny was pointing out where we would be proposing to change out the window. We just want to raise the sill height so that we can have, so that we can convert this into a kitchen. Um, and then we would be having, you know, again, this is the existing and then we're essentially adding three bedrooms, um, to make it a four-bedroom, four-bath house suitable for a family that can live there and grow with this house and, um, have it be this jewel box of the neighborhood that continues to contribute to the character. Um, these are some of the elevations. Again, want to point out that we're maintaining the floor height, um, throughout those, throughout the project. We're not proposing to, um, raise any floor height. So therefore the, the whole project is on the same level. Um, so as, as opposed to the prior, um, applicant that was approved where the height difference was fairly significant and rose above the historic facade, front facade. Um, we really want to maintain that language throughout the project, including within the courtyard, adding, you know, a same stucco renovation, matching the same color as the stucco, using the same parapet language, um, the ziggurat, you know, really embracing the Spanish mission style of this property. Again, this is the same, uh, you know, elevations with this new addition. We've also engaged a landscape architect to help us think through especially on the, um, runoff and how we can really utilize this lot, um, and add, you know, a significant area for entertainment and enjoyment. Um, that's where you can start to see the buffering and how we would add the plantings in, um, to help mitigate the runoff, um, as well as making this central courtyard something that is a great asset to the property. Um, some, again, some different examples of the plantings that we're proposing being native plants, um, hopefully to, you know, again, reduce irrigation, reduce runoff, all the things that we're trying to do, um, that are part of good design. This is a front rendering. As you can see, you would not be able to see the addition from the front elevation. We think this is important in order to maintain the character of the neighborhood. Um, this is the side elevation. We have a, we're proposing a vegetable garden right here. Um, we're maintaining the, um, the circular drive in the front, also adding, um, you know, some crush gravel for a car to park here, but this would also provide a walkway to that back courtyard area. Um, and again, you can see the addition in the back. You can see here that, uh, window that we're proposing to change out. Another front elevation where you can see the neighboring structure. Um, side elevation, this is the other Spanish mission house that is on the other side of the property. Courtyard view, um, a small lap pool, um, a place for a barbecue, um, a place for some lounge chairs. This is not something that is overly, um, I think, I don't think it's overly generous. I think it is a, a sweet little space in your home to be able to enjoy the outdoors. Um, and then again, uh, just a little bit more of an overview where you can see how we are addressing the hillside with the addition. Um, with that, I will save two minutes for our bell. Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation. Okay. Um, open public hearing? Close public hearing? Commissioner? Oh, oh, still all right?
Hello, my name's Lion Porter. I live three or four houses down, uh, depending on what side of the street you go on, uh, in Little Hollywood. Um, just here to give kind of a neighborhood approval for this. Uh, it's a really tight neighborhood. Like everyone knows every single person. Uh, it's a dead end street. It's a magical little block. Um, uh, so much so like, uh, in COVID, it was my son's birthday. We all ran into each other at the end of the street and everyone sang him happy birthday and everyone's like musicians. I mean, it's like, it's one of those, you know, 20 people, uh, all know each other and, um, all surrounding houses support this. All houses on the block support it. Um, I support it. Uh, and I think, um, this, the, the previous owners, they did get, uh, an extension, which I think would have, there's a very similar impact. It's a really tiny lot. Um, I think it would have much less of a visual disturbance than the house next door that was approved by the committee that was green and wide and, um, uh, and very visible. Right? And so, um, again, tight neighborhood, everyone's in favor for it. Just here to give a thumbs up. And, uh, this is such a special, for Little Hollywood, this is one of the, the Little Hollywood houses. Uh, and it, you know, has fallen into a bit of disrepair and it, it needs a little love and attention. And so we're all excited about this. Um, and, uh, and just wanted to give our support.
Thank you. So I did open public hearing again. Um, anyone else? I don't want to miss anybody. All right. Thank you. Close public hearing?
I think this is a really great design. Uh, I think it's, it's, the courtyard is in keeping with the, uh, style of the house. Um, I'm a little envious of it actually. Uh, when it comes to setbacks, we do generally take a, a pretty firm line on maintaining bulk, bulk zoning standards. Um, usually, and I'm, I'm open to hearing what the other commissioners have to say, uh, from a safety perspective, when there is an active alley or side street, um, where there's cars and pedestrians moving in and out, you need setbacks to ensure safety. In this case, there's what's called an unimproved alley, but it's, there's no alley there. It's a, a power line and fence, fence row. So, uh, given the overall modest dimensions or massing and scale of the addition, in this case, I'm open to being persuaded by the applicant's, um, request. So.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner.
I have a question to the staff. Uh, I remember we previously approved, uh, the previous plan. Do you have exact number? What's the setback from the unimproved alley we previously approved? Do you have exact number, what's the setback from the unimproved alley we previously approved?
I don't have the exact number in front of me. What I can tell you, it was so complicated. A lot of different things happened. So maybe, maybe I didn't give you quite enough background. So the very first thing that happened was staff issued an administrative permit for an outbuilding. And that's what you're seeing here. This outbuilding met all the design guidelines for an outbuilding. So we were able to issue that administratively. I think that probably was five feet from the rear, maybe three feet from the rear setback, depending on what the square footage was. So that was issued administratively. Then, correct? I think you did that one. I'm pretty sure that's the case. We issued this permit. They, they never built that. They instead decided they would like an addition. So they came to us with an addition application. They wanted two stories and they showed us this. And they said, well, our two-story addition won't be any taller from the street than this looked. And that was the argument they brought to you. You guys were not compelled by that argument that a two-story addition would be appropriate to this one-story house. So that application was disapproved. Then you, you said perhaps a one-story addition would be appropriate. So they came back to staff with a one-story addition that met all the guidelines, that met the rear setback. And so, we approved that administratively. And then that was what wasn't built either. The property was sold. And so, now the new property owner is proposing this new design that does go into the setback. So this one was, had an appropriate setback for an outbuilding. And then, okay, thank you. So we approved that outbuilding with a five-foot rear setback, which is appropriate for an outbuilding. But the addition had at least a full 20 feet, as is required. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you, I appreciate it. I agree with Commissioner Price with a unique location of that. I mean, when we consider a rear setback is when actually there is active alley and then car go in and out. And seems like this is, it calls alley, but not active. So in that sense, I think, you know, we can forego the safety concern. So I'm having a hard time because this is a really unique area and a unique design. And no other neighborhood has this kind of unique design in Nashville. In that sense, I try to keep that particular unique setback. This might be appropriate design. I'm kind of persuaded by that. And so also, I'm kind of thinking out loud if will this create precedent? But I think one thing for us to have is a unique location, particularly not active alley. So I think we do have reasoning to encroach at that rear setback because of this unique location and unique architecture. So I'm kind of leaning towards, you know, same court as Commissioner Price.
Technology, I don't, don't get along too well sometimes. I want to go back. I have a question, I think, for staff or maybe for the commission that we had actually approved an encroachment into the rear setback prior. Did I hear that? That was before my time? It was, but it was just an outbuilding? Okay.
It wasn't a full infill?
Okay, I'm going to pass. I'm still taking on that then.
Jenny, just go back that one little time.
Yeah, let me, let me just clarify that. So this is, this is the outbuilding that we approved. It's not an encroachment. An outbuilding is allowed within five feet of the rear property line. So that met the standard guidelines and that was approved by staff. The addition-
And the two-story addition was within the rear?
The two-story addition was disapproved because it was two stories.
Okay.
But then a one-story addition was approved and that was fully within the 20-foot.
But that was previous property owner?
It was a previous property owner. And this is a different, yes, yes.
Okay, I'm with you now.
Well, as Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Price both echoed, is that this is such a unique neighborhood for Nashville. And I, given that this is not an active alley, given that daddos are right up against the rear setback, there's another home right up against the rear setback, I have no problem approving this setback.
Chair comment is that it was really refreshing to see the plans by the architect has been reasonable. Again, with the three particular projects that have come before us and it was really, it was good to read on, on how you kept within the guidelines except for this particular setback, which is, which is what our purview is. And, and again, when we, if we did make an exception or if we made this leniency decision, is because, again, we're very clear and our legal tells us we have to be very clear on why we do this. And also to help staff with further projects in the future. And again, because that's, that's a considerable point with the abandoned, I mean, the, what is it again? The alley? Yeah, unimproved alley. But also because of the design is tasteful and within the guidelines. So if I were to vote, that's just my comment, is that we do appreciate it when, when a project comes before us that is within those guidelines because then we can make another consideration that we wouldn't have otherwise.
And in deference to staff, you know, they're, they're black and white. They got to follow their rules and, but, you know, there's a lot of gray and that's what we're here for. And that's, was an excellent presentation.
Commissioner Cashin, do you have another comment?
Yes.
I think you've convinced me. No, I, I agree. I agree with everything you've said. It's very well done. And once again, the safety issue of the unimproved alley is, I think, something to be considered.
Mass and scaling, reasonable. Things are within the guidelines, except for that, okay?
Madam Chair, with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion for, to approve the setback variance for 1807 Lakers Drive and the proposed addition.
Okay, there is a motion.
Before, just before you complete that motion, are there any conditions, are typical conditions we'd want to-
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I was going to maybe interject that. Since it seems that you're leaning that direction, we would just suggest that perhaps you include conditions that staff review and approve final materials and utility locations. I think everything else was in accordance with the guidelines.
Please add Jenny's comments to my motion.
With our typical conditions. Yes, and to please, you know, refer that back to staff and be sure that everything is approved. Okay, there was a motion. There is a second? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's all four said yes. So that motion passes. Thank you, applicant.
Thank you.
This next case today is at 804 Shelby Avenue in the Edgefield Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay. And this is an application to rehabilitate the historic house and enlarge it with a ridge raise and rear addition. The addition will step in from the sides of the existing building and will be no taller, other than, of course, the ridged, the raised ridge. The floor level, the eaves and the ridge of the addition drop as it carries toward the rear, which helps to reduce the perceived scale of the addition. There are side dormers that create partial upper story on the rear addition, but that's a compatible one and a half story form behind the one-story house. The location, materials and proportion of window openings on the addition are compatible with the historic house. The footprint of the existing house is 1,100 square feet. And the footprint of the addition is 1,140 square feet. Typically, it is not appropriate for an addition to increase the footprint of a house by more than its size, more than doubling the footprint. However, staff finds that due to the small size of the one-story house, the appropriate height, width and proportions of the addition and because of proportion, because the addition only increases by more than 40 square feet, more than the existing, the amount of the existing, that the scale does not overwhelm the historic house. There's a non-contributing outbuilding in the year for which a demolition permit will also be issued administratively. Those are some pictures of the existing house. And I went into greater detail on the rehabilitation in the staff recommendation. But if you have any questions, you can let me know. Staff recommends approval of the proposed rehabilitation and rear addition with these conditions. I'll not read all of them, if that's okay. But I'll point out that conditions one and eight relate to the rehabilitation of the historic house, things like repointing masonry, repairing windows. Only condition, condition nine really relates to material approvals on the addition itself. And then conditions 10 and 11 are standard conditions that relate to site features. And the applicant has said that they accept these conditions. They can confirm that or elaborate if necessary. And with those conditions, staff finds that the proposed rehabilitation and addition meet the guidelines for the Edgefield Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay.
Thanks, Sean. Any questions? Okay, is the applicant here? Okay, open public hearing? Close public hearing? Yep. Again, that I really appreciate it, that staff and their recommendation require shoring and plan, shoring plan. I mean, we just cannot, you know, that's so important to have that in there. So anyway, just want to, again, give kudos to that recommendation. Okay, commissioners, any discussion, any motion?
I have a question. Since the applicant's not here, is this the same applicant that wanted to demolish it originally?
It is, yes.
Okay. I'd say they, they came around.
And thank you.
If there's any other discussion, this is really, this is a good project. It's a great addition. Sean, I think you've done, that's a good report, good recommendations. I move for approval.
Yep, thanks for reminding us of that. That number looked familiar, but that's, that's a, that's a good outcome. Okay, there's a motion? Is there a second? There's a second? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I do not hear or see any opposed, so the motion passes. Thank you, applicant 804 Shelby.
Yes.
Okay, next up is 1,006 Halsian. It is a folk Victorian frame house that was constructed prior to 1908. As part of the work, the applicant intends to rebuild the existing chimneys due to structural issues. Staff recommends that the chimneys be rebuilt with a historic brick and if any new brick is required, that MHCC review the brick prior to purchase and installation. The applicant also intends to remove the existing nonhistoric metal siding and staff recommends that MHCC review the state of any siding that might be underneath it to see if there's any historic siding remaining that can be reused and repaired. And also, staff recommends the receipt of a shoring plan. Here is the front facade and the right elevation. The applicant proposes a dormer on the right side of the historic house, which you can kind of see in the front elevation. Also, they're proposing a one and a half story addition that rises two feet taller than the historic house. Staff does find that this meets the, the design guidelines. Here is the right, the rear facade and the right elevation. Again, the application's proposing a dormer on the right side of the historic roof. It's, it's set at least two feet from the, the roof ridge and then the wall below and then all the other valleys. And staff finds it's proportional to the dormer that's on the front of the house. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the project with pretty much our standard conditions up there, that we receive a shoring plan and partial demolition be accomplished manually. If this, we want to review the siding that's underneath, if there is any historic siding underneath, approval of the brick, if there's any new brick and approval of all windows and doors and the HVAC units. So the applicant's here. If you have any questions, I'm also happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Melissa. Applicant?
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Ward with Allied Ward Architects. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, open public hearing? Close public hearing? Commissioners?
Again, this looks like a good application to me. Nice addition, well done, Michael. Yeah, so anyone else? Seeing no further comment, with regard to 1,006 Halsian Avenue, I move for approval with staff conditions.
There's a motion?
A second.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
I do not hear or see any opposed, so that motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, next up is 601 Malta, which is located in the Haynes Heights Neighborhood Conservation Zoning Overlay. It's a 1955 ranch house that contributes to the historic character of the neighborhood. The house is located on the corner of Malta and White's Creek Pike and it's kind of oriented towards the corner. So it doesn't really have an orientation necessarily to one street or the other. So the applicant proposes a 180-square-foot outbuilding. Both the codes department and MHCC require permits for outbuildings over 100 square feet. In the past, MHCC has required that all about outbuildings that require preservation permits, so all outbuildings over 100 square feet, meet the guidelines for materials and for outbuilding height, scale, location and setbacks. That has meant that many prefabricated sheds from large retailers and shed manufacturers that were over 100 square feet could not be approved, typically because the materials did not meet the design guidelines. In this case, 601 Malta's shed has a height, scale, setbacks and location that meet all the design guidelines. However, the LP smart side cladding and the wood, with wood grain stamp and the vinyl windows do not meet the typical interpretation of the design guidelines for materials. Staff finds, however, that these materials can meet the design guidelines in this case for several reasons, including the temporary nature of small outbuildings without permanent foundations, the variety of materials used in mid-century neighborhoods like Haynes Heights, the small scale of these buildings compared to the large lot sizes of this district and the requirement that the outbuildings be located in the rear of the lot. A variety of man-made materials were used between 1915 and 1980 in Haynes Heights to mimic traditional and natural materials. For instance, a variety of synthetic siding such as aluminum and masonite were used to mimic wood siding and perma stone was used to mimic stone. Haynes Heights generally has large lots over 20,000 square feet. Because of the large lot sizes, outbuildings that are 200 square feet or less do not have a major impact on the historic character of the neighborhood. Moreover, since many of the houses have deep front setbacks, if sheds are located in the rear of the property, they will be less visible from the street and their materials may not even be discernible. So staff is recommending that we approve the outbuilding as submitted with the materials and that we also, staff, if this project is approved, staff will then go and edit the design guidelines to reflect kind of this approval. And Robin, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is also similar to the other mid-century district. This would be in keeping with what you determined was okay for the mid-century district that you approved earlier in the hearing.
Okay. Melissa? Yeah, just a little chair comment as well. Again, this italicized language to the design guidelines is not a change. It's just clarifying what has already been under the design guidelines. So commissioners, do you understand that? Okay?
I do have a quick question. The 10-foot, 6-inch height, where's, where does that come from? I must have missed it.
It came from researching standard sizes that are available.
Okay. Thank you, Melissa. Applicant? You're welcome to come up. If you're here, okay. All right. All right, otherwise, we will open public hearing and close public hearing. Commissioners?
It seems very straightforward to me. So adding the condition meets a design guideline. So with 601 Malta Drive, I make motion to adopt staff recommendation- So with 601 Malta Drive, I make motion to adopt staff recommendation.
There's a motion?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor? Seeing and hearing none opposed, that motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to 1004 Housion Drive. This lot's actually located just to the left of the addition you approved two items before. You can see that house on the left. So 1004 along with 1002 and 1,000 Housion were the location of the Second Missionary Baptist Church until recently. The church building was originally constructed between 1955 and 1957 as a one-story brick structure from a sonic lodge. About 1991, the structure was expanded, adding the roof addition and a rear addition. Due to the structure's date of construction, design and materials, it does not contribute to the historic character of the Waverly Beaumont Conservation Overlay. In September 2022, MHCC staff issued an administrative permit for the, for the demolition of this, of the church structure. The owner will be re-establishing the existing lot lines in order to construct three new infill houses on the lots. This application is for the Western Most Lot, which is highlighted in pink, 1,004 Housion. And I will say that we're already working with the architect and the team on the designs of the other two. They're just not ready yet. So you will be seeing those in the upcoming months. So just, I like to start off with context photos, just to show, before I show the design, what the, what the area is looking like. Again, you just approved the addition to the house on the top left. Across the street is a mixture of one, one and a half story historic houses and then larger two-story structures that were constructed prior to the overlay. Again, here's some more photos going further down the street. And then this photograph here is infill that was approved, I can't remember, it was sometime within the last year and a half. It's still under construction, but the commission did approve it relatively recently. So here is the site plan. The infill meets all the base zoning setbacks. And staff finds that the way the front setback is configured is similar to the front setback of the historic house to the left. Staff does recommend that there be a walkway added from the sidewalk to the front porch, which is just not on the site plan. Here are the front and right, left, right facade, right facade elevations. The, the infill is a one and a half stories, 35 feet wide and 27 feet tall, all of which staff finds to meet the historic context. Here are the rear and the left elevations. Overall, staff finds that the infill's height, scale, roof form, fenestration pattern, orientation, materials and design meet the historic context and the design guidelines. So staff is recommending approval with our standard conditions about the finished floor height being consistent with the finished floor heights in the immediate area, that there be a front walkway added. We review all materials. And that the HVAC location, we approve as well. The applicant is here.
Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you.
Applicant? There you are.
Thank you, Melissa. I'm Michael Ward with Allard Ward Architects. If you have any questions about this particular project, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Open public hearing? Close public hearing?
I just want to thank applicant interpreting our design guideline very well and put the life into the project. Really appreciate it. Make our job much, much easier. And with that, if there's no other comment, I would move to approve 1,004 Housion with staff conditions.
There's a motion? Second? There's a second? All in favor? Okay. Do not hear or see any unopposed, so we carry that motion. Thank you.
It just looks like a big improvement to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for following design guidelines, Mr. Ward. Not quite.
Got a couple more things, three more things. Next is another revision to the rule of order, rules of order. This is just another extension of an overhaul of the whole document. So we revised the rules and public awareness to align with how staff works now, what they specifically do for the commission. Because obviously, the whole department's big enough now, since these were first written, that staff does a lot of things for the department overall, in addition to the work that they do for you. So we were just kind of cleaning up the language so that the rules, your rules, just reflects staff's role in terms of this commission. We removed the historic B and Bs as an overlay because it's one of six different types. The other types aren't listed individually. And the information is redundant. We moved historic home events to another section because it is actually a special exception. The only role that we play in that is to make a recommendation to BZA, Border Zoning Appeals, as to whether or not the building's historic. That's it. You're not reviewing anything. So we've added that to a section that clarifies that staff can take care of that process for you. We added our two, new two-step agenda process. Now that we've had several months, tried it out, seems to be working well. We went ahead and added that in. And then we added some new guidance on dealing with demos of historic buildings that happens without a permit. And that is to allow you the possibility of requiring a full reconstruction or something close to reconstruction. And then Ann and I are going to keep working on the ordinance to see if we can put it in there as well, so that hopefully you never have to make a decision like that. But if you do, it's fully backed up.
Right.
And so we recommend approval of the revised rules of order.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion to adopt the revised rules of order.
Motion?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. None opposed on that?
And next, we have a little bit of training. Ann's going to start it off with covering some of the issues that came up last month. And then Melissa Baladoc is going to tell you a little bit about reconstruction after the tornado.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit nashville.gov.